Good evening, welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for November 24th of 2015. Our custom is to provide and present the invocation and the pledge before calling our meeting officially to order. Tonight, the invocation is going to be presented by a long, long, long friend, Reverend Christopher Goss from Ho'O'Amor God. We're glad you're with us tonight. That'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Officer Deion Condrey, who has been with the Cobb County Police Department for 12 years. He has been assigned investigator, an active investigator, and reconstructionist for six years. He is also a member of our dive time, dive team, excuse me. For those of us who do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Certainly, as we come at a time doing this Thanksgiving festivities, we pause this evening as we make this invocation for this commission meeting on the 24th of November Our great Creator and Sustainer, we thank you. We thank you for sustenance, we thank you for value, we thank you for love, we thank you for acceptance. We ask that you take away every fear, for that's not an option, for you have given us a sound mind. And we ask that you not allow us to have any overly concern about terrorism, for you have already taken care of that as well. What we do ask, that you receive our thanks for these wonderful commissioners, their constituents, and everyone who's serving with them, for the communities and for our lives, as we are able to enjoy your blessings once again. We ask for unity, we invoke your presence, which is able to make all things work together. Not only do we ask for unity, we invoke God, a spirit of harmony, of peace, of forgiveness. It is in your Son Jesus' name that we make this invocation, asking that you would take it and use our Thanksgiving to your glory. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you Reverend and Officer, we appreciate you being here tonight. Commissioner Weatherford, you want to recognize a special guest?
I do, thank you Mr. Chairman. Wanted to recognize Chad Crawford down here with Shannon Woody. He is a marketing major at KSU, and he has taken a political science course tonight, and he's shadowing me, so he will never be the same again. And we appreciate him taking interest in our, our commission meeting. He wants to be an entrepreneur when he graduates from college. Chad, welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I too would like to welcome my brother Steve, who's visiting from the Chicago area. He's in town for the holidays, and he left snow this morning to be here with us today. I didn't make him go anything. Danny's Danny. I'm going to officially call this meeting to order. For those folks that are with us tonight or watching from home, earlier today at our work session, we went through tabs one, two, and three. Tonight, we begin our evening with presentations. There's one item, and it's to recognize Mr. Dan Post for his service to the Atlanta Regional Commission. Dan, if you'd come up, please. Well, Dan, normally we have something to give you, but...
How about a good handshake?
Thank you. Dan Post has been a citizen's pointe for the Atlanta Regional Commission for how many years now?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years, and he's done a yeoman's job for Cobb County, representing the citizens' representatives on the ARC Board as a board member. He has stepped down at the end of this year, and we just wanted to bring it up front and say thank you for stepping up as a citizen of Cobb County for all you do to represent Cobb County and the region as part of the Board, and we appreciate your, you doing that and all the dedication you've given, not only to our, our community, but you've been an important part of the pension committee and the finance committee, am I got that right, for the ARC, so making sure that the ARC staff has got the good representation of your expertise in the financial field. So, we want to say thank you and offer the opportunity to wish, if you want anything, you want to say?
No, I'd just like to say, it's been an honor to serve Cobb County, an honor to serve you and the other chairman that I've served under. This is the best county in Georgia, it's no doubt about it, and it's because people care and people serve and people work, and it's a great, been a great honor.
Terrific, well, appreciate it, Jay. Thank you. We have a certificate for you somewhere, it'll be in the mail, no doubt. Let's give Dan a big thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, she's now has free time for other boards. Tab five, our Sun Trust update, Mr. Hankerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. I'm here to provide an update on the construction of Sun Trust Park. Eight hundred thirty-five workers on site as of last week, and eight hundred fifty thousand man-hours as of November 1st, no lost time due to injuries. Concrete topping out celebration on 11/17, represent completion of the structural steel. Forty-three thousand cubic yards placed in less than one year of concrete. More than 5,000 concrete trucks round trips without significant impact on traffic. Concrete topping out, I tell you, they, I was there for that celebration, and they invited all the workers on site, so those eight hundred and fifty workers were under that tent, and they made it. It was, you had a good feeling there that day on how the workers seemed to appreciate their jobs and what they're doing. Steel framing for office facility ongoing. The seating bowl precast concrete placement complete behind the home plate, and placement of structure steel trusses on the mezzanine level, third base behind home plate. American Bills continue to implement workarounds to mitigate impacts on construction latest period of rainy weather, which we've had our share. East parking deck is under construction, and the placement of concrete cap on the stormwater detention pond is underway, which will be under a deck. Public safety is still a priority. The progress with the fire marshal, the advisor, things are moving along well with good communications and some inspections beginning on the structure. Police personnel will be visiting other major league baseball and National Football League stadiums, continue to observe their security as we put forth or they put forth their security Recycling, they're recycling on site so far. They recycle eleven thousand dollars worth of material, which they donated to Kids' Chance of Georgia, and they did, did that presentation at the topping out ceremony. They benefit foundation for children whose parents are injured in construction. The bonds again close on September 8th, which was a major milestone, project milestones. The Cobb Marriott Coliseum Project Series 2014, the original 2013 projection of 24 million in debt service came in at 22.41.6 million dollars, less than the 2013 expectations. But it, this is a view of the stadium, how things are going. It's really the beginning, it look like a stadium now. They're doing a lot of work on the inside, so a lot of things, as you see them putting up the framing and other for the offices, and part of that will be taking place. But everything's going well, Mr. Chairman, and seem to be on track.
Great. Any questions or comments in the Board? Thank you, Mr. Hankerson, we look forward to your update next month. Tab six, transportation, one item, Director De Massimo.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners and County Manager, we ask that you conduct a public hearing prior to expending a hundred thousand dollars or more to secure engineering design services for Dallas Highway at Lost Mountain Road/Mars Hill Road, project number X-2305; Wendy Hill Road/Terrill Mill Road Connector, project number X-2401; Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs, project number X-2507; and Post Oak Trip Road at Henry Road, project number X-2311. Again, we just ask that the Board of Commissioners conduct this public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for this item and this item only. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this time, please come forward. Seeing a hearing, another public hearing is closed. Thank you, Director. Tab seven, our first public comment.
Your first speaker is Roberta Cook, if you'd come forward, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Roberta Cook. I'm from Mableton, Georgia, and I'm here to, here today, this evening, to talk about the 2008 park bond. After hearing about all the concrete that we're laying up in Cumberland, I think we're going to need some green space to balance out all the concrete. And just to refresh everybody's memory, in 2008, we had an election, and in the election, there was a referendum for the voters to vote on a forty million dollar park bond for Cobb County to buy land for parks. And it passed, I was one of the sixty-five percent of the voters that voted for the park bond, and we did have an economic downturn, so it never did get issued, but obviously, things have turned around for Cobb County, and so we're looking for that park bond to be issued, and would encourage the Commissioners to do that. And since there are people out there that maybe have forgotten or thought that it had already been done, we do have a website that's called LoveCobbParks.com, where we put all that information about that parks bond, so people can educate themselves, and hopefully others will come forward and encourage you to issue the bond, too. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Lynn Walston, if you'd come forward, please.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you for having me here, allowing me to speak. I live in East Cobb, but as a Cobb citizen, I too am concerned about the amount of green space and parkland that we have in our county. It was, it proposed in the 2013 comprehensive plan, something to, along these lines, that thirteen thousand seven hundred thirty-six acres, or 6.2 percent of all county land, be, be listed, and the, the, what we have now is actually much lower than that available. One of the county's goals in the 2030 comprehensive plan was to acquire at least fourteen hundred forty-eight acres as parkland, just to maintain that 6.2 percent level. Another goal was to save 10 percent, and even up to 20 percent of all county land preserved as green space, which would mean between eight thousand to thirty thousand extra acres that need to be added to get to those levels. We request that the new 2040 plan include more acres of, of parkland. Roberta has already addressed the twenty, it's 2008 referendum on the ballot for forty million dollars to purchase parkland property. It was, it was approved by the voters in 2008, but Cobb County has not yet issued it. Many of the properties to purchase with 2008 park bond have been developed, and the amount of residential land available for purchase has been shrinking. This is the time to save that land before it's all developed. And one thing that is a little bit encouraging is the, in Commissioner Lee's news report, that less money now, exactly point one millage, will be needed from the debt service fund to fund the Braves. So, we're very hopeful that maybe that point one millage can stay in the debt service fund and be applied to the park bond, 2008 park bond, as earmarked for in 2008. Thank you.
Can I just get your name real quick for the record?
Sorry, Lynn Walston.
Thank you, sir, thank you, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I should've.
It's okay. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Jim Astuto, please come forward.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jim Astuto, and I'm here to talk about the stadium project financing that has recently been discussed in, in the paper and some other places. Some background, I have over 25 years in financial management with large Fortune 100 companies, so I think I'm somewhat qualified to talk about it. The Braves Stadium Partnership has been touted by many in Cobb County government as a winner for the state, for the citizens of Cobb County. Some have even said it was a no-brainer, and Chairman Lee, I think recently publicly advised that it had an annual return on investment of about 60 percent. Let's think about the logic of that statement. If the annual ROI, return on investment, on the stadium project was actually 60 percent, the county's total investment of about, oh, almost 500 million, that's counting the bonds and the interest, would be paid back in less than two years, not 30. The truth of the matter is based on data provided by Jim Fiersten, who I think is the county's finance director, and I have a copy of the data he's provided, if anybody wants to see it. The stadium partner, partnership will actually generate about six million dollars per year, less than tax revenue than is required to pay off the bond debt for the new stadium. That's why over six million per year, per year in property taxes is also required to retire the bonds. If the project was actually generating positive cash flow, ROI, the six million per year of property taxes would not be needed to pay, pay down the bond debt, but it doesn't. And to be clear, here's the math that I use. The annual bond debt service is projected, this is round numbers, give or take a million here, is projected to be twenty-two and a half million dollars a year. Rent from the Braves will be approximately 6.1 million. So, the net annual bond debt service of the county will be 16.4 million. The estimated stadium operation taxes from all sources, CID, is about 10.3 million. So, the net shortfall that will be paid for with Cobb County property taxes is 6.1 million. Using traditional business calculation of ROI, which I've done for over 25 years, it is calculated as the gain from investment, 10.3 million, minus the cost of the investment, 16.4 million, divided by the cost of the investment, 16.4 million. That produces a negative ROI of 36 percent. That's minus 36 percent, not plus 60 percent. I doubt any of the Commissioners when invest a dollar and expect to only get back 64 percent on their, on that investment. While I'm sure there will be lots of economic development in the area around the new stadium, that doesn't necessarily mean the county will share in the level, will share in it at the level needed to generate a positive ROI on the county's total investment of 16.4 million. Yes, there will be many winners from the project, especially the Braves and the Cumberland CID, but I doubt, but I don't see myself or most of the other citizens in Cobb County being in that group. This project is corporate welfare at its finest for Liberty Media and the Braves at the expense of Cobb County citizens. In closing, saying this project is a winner, and it will generate 60 percent return on investment, appears to be an attempt to make the stadium project appear to be something it really isn't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
The last speaker is Gary Pelfrey, would you please come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm Gary Pelfrey, and I had absolutely nothing to do with engineering these two, one following the other. I'm not here to talk about the Braves at all, but I'm here tonight to talk about something which you said you learned as a result of the Braves project, and that was how important transparency was. Well, I am here as a major advocate for transparency, and I need to point out to you that you haven't done real well at it so far. We managed to kill a 24-year-old unarmed young man, and nobody in authority has ever even acknowledged the responsibility for it. Commissioner Weatherford, I have heard you say that Commissioner Cupid owes the world an apology. I'd like for you to understand, sir, that you and I have an advantage over Ms. Cupid in our experience. We have both been 24-year-old young men, and it's very understandable what was in his mind that night that he decided to chase an attractive black woman leaving a commercial business motel at 1:30 in the morning. So, she doesn't owe you an apology, I believe you owe her one. But...
Mr. Pelfrey...
The transparency I am here to talk about, sir.
Okay, remember that remarks are being made to the Chair of the Board, please.
I believe they are, these are well-deserved to everyone, sir.
Well, but they're made through, made through the Chair, please.
You're right, sir, and I apologize if I have offended anyone for stating what I believe. I'm here to talk about transparency, and I saw a project here about traffic that no one came to comment on, and everybody said, okay, it's done. I believe the transparency requirement for this Board extends to looking to see what's going on. Can you help me with some, if you could? I took this picture on the 11th of September, alerting folks to the traffic problems on Terrill Mill Road, because of the replacement, apparently the necessary replacement of the, the large water main. It said, expect some delays. Well, they were to begin on 9/19, I think they actually began on 9/27, and the result, this is a Google map, of the area that's been turned into a two-lane road. I decided to come here tonight because I live near there, and I was coming by there to go to the drugstore at about 4:10 this afternoon, and I saw traffic backed up at the bottom end of that red line, all the way back to Powers Ferry, from two feeders. This is unacceptable. I went on about my business and up to the library, and came back in the back way, and saw that at 4:25, there was no more work going on there. I stopped and asked two folks who were standing around waiting for a ride, what was going on, and they said, oh, we don't work, we work till 4:15, 4:30. It turns out, nobody worked last weekend. You have got thousands of citizens every night spending an extra 20 or 30 minutes in that traffic, and you don't have the first sign of a light, or any overtime work, or Lord knows what's going to happen on Thanksgiving weekend. The talk about the Braves Stadium, I took note that there were 835 workers on site. When I went by our site this morning, there were five, and I challenge anyone to come there and watch what they are doing with two large devices, and picking up one load at a time, and moving it 10 feet with the dump truck, and putting it back in the hole. But, I suspect my time is about up, I would show you this one other thing, which shows where this is in the county, it's not just us folks on Terrill Mill that are hurting. Most of Commissioner Ox's district is hurting, because as you can see, you can't see very well there, the little red area is a major feeder from I-75 for all the folks trying to get into East Cobb, and it's gotten precious little attention. There's some severe safety hazards there. It turns out, apparently, the construction team has decided to farm out its safety issues to a smaller company, and I presume the county has countenanced that, maybe in the efforts of, of limiting liability when someone gets killed, but we're very close to having some severe accidents there, and I urge the county to pay some attention to it. I would like to close with one other slight...
Thank you, sir.
With one other slide, if I might?
No, I'm sorry, your time is expired. By the way, that's a Cobb Marriott Water Authority project.
I beg your pardon?
That's a Cobb Marriott Water Authority project, and we'll, we'll chat with them. But thank you for your time, sir.
I still didn't understand what you said, I got the things part.
The project?
This is not the project, this, this is...
No, Mr. Pelfrey, the project you were just referencing is a Cobb Marriott Water Authority project. We will talk to them about your concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
It takes us to tab, as for the last speaker, correct? Takes us to tab eight, our consent. Commissioners, I'd like to bring forward a motion that we approve the consent agenda as a rise and authorize execution of necessary documents for the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
A second, going to comment, Commissioner Otte?
Yes, I need to recuse myself from item number nine, because they're a contributor to my campaign.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero with the aforementioned abstention. So, we're going to go here to tab nine, our transportation, we have filed four items. Director De Massimo.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners and County Manager, our first item tonight is to approve a consultant services agreement with Heath &amp; Lineback Engineers, Inc., for engineering design services of Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle, project number E-4190. Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle is an approved project in the thoroughfare improvements component of the 2011 Splice Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Heath &amp; Lineback Engineers, in an amount not to exceed 642,246.58 for engineering design services of Interstate North Parkway at Interstate North Circle, project number E-4190, MIS contract number 000911. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Otte?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the question, motion carries five zero. Thank you, next item, please.
Agenda item number two, I want to make note that the commission district that's shown on that should be one and three. The item is to ratify previous action by the county manager, authorizing emergency repairs to a segment of Stilesborough Road, and approve project number E-2650-WO-08 to the 2013 countywide unit price contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., for said repairs, MIS contract number 00612. Drainage system improvements is an approved component of the 2011 Splice Transportation Improvements Program, and we request that the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the county manager, authorizing emergency repairs to a segment of Stilesborough Road in response to voids under the travel lane. Approve project number E-2650-WO-08 to the 2013 countywide unit price contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed 170,022.25 for said repairs, MIS contract number 00612. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve is presented, sir.
Second.
Call the question, motion carries five zero. Next item, please.
To authorize the procurement of four freestanding buildings to be utilized to store salt, sand, material at strategic locations throughout the county for inclement weather equipment and supply storage, project number X-2605. We request that the Board of Commissioners authorize the procurement of four freestanding buildings at a total cost not to exceed 34,083 to be utilized to store salt and sand material at strategic locations throughout the county for inclement weather equipment and supply storage, project number EX-2605, and further authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll bring this forward as the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the question, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item four, please.
To approve a design challenge collaboration agreement with Savannah College of Art and Design, Inc., for potential enhancement of the Cobb Community Transit Bus Shelter located at the Mabel House. The department is collaborating with the Savannah College of Art and Design, Inc., SCAD, on a project to enhance and improve the Cobb Community Transit, CCT Bus Shelter, located at Mabel House, 5239 Floyd Road in Mableton. I want to mention as a part of this that we, our collaboration includes the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, the South Cobb Arts Alliance, the Mableton Area Improvement Coalition, and the Transit Advisory Board. The SCAD students representing multiple disciplines from the School of Building Arts, the School of Fine Arts, and the School of Communication Arts will work as individuals to participate in a design challenge to develop and present design concepts for the Mabel House CCT Bus Shelter. On February 19th, SCAD will conduct the design challenge event in collaboration with the county. Final design concepts will be submitted on the following day. This design challenge collaboration agreement details the responsibilities. In addition to those community partners that I mentioned earlier, this is also a part, a project that is shared with Cobb DOT, CCT, and Cobb Parks and Rec. We will be responsible for providing plans, dimensions, and necessary information to the bus shelter enhancement project. In consideration for SCAD's administration and conduct of the design challenge, a fee in the amount of 5,000 dollars will be made payable to SCAD. The fee is being made, will be applied to support of SCAD students and programs without limitation. This was, this fee is being paid directly to SCAD on behalf of Cobb County through a private donation. In addition, the participant who submits the winning entry will receive an award package also... also secured by private donations. No county funding will be required. The design challenge collaboration agreement with SCAD has been reviewed by the county attorney's office, and we request that the Board of Commissioners approve a design challenge collaboration agreement with the Savannah College of Art and Design, SCAD, for potential enhancement of the Cobb Community Transit Bus Shelter located at the Mabel House and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents in a form substantially similar to that provided under separate cover and as approved by the county attorney's office.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Just a minute. We're going to take a deep breath here for a moment. This, this presentation by you is your last presentation as Director of Cobb County Department of Transportation. The folks that are here, the folks at home, might not know what you're doing. Would you please just provide a little bit of a background why you won't be here next month?
You know, why?
So can I start back at the beginning?
No.
You're going to give me a little bit of time?
No.
Do I get five minutes? So, you know, it has been an absolute honor to serve in this position for the last six years. Once in a while, over the course of a career, an incredible opportunity presents itself, and it's one where you just know that the time is right and the opportunity is right, and you need to go take that challenge. It was a little bit like that all the, with this job as well. Former chairman and Attorney General Olens had really sort of told me that this would be a job I should be really interested in, and I wasn't sure about that. I came for the interview with the management team that was assembled and walked out of the interview going, "I just have got to go and do this. What an awesome opportunity." Interviewed with Mr. Hankerson, interesting interview because Mr. Hankerson will tell you, he tells you this throughout your time here, but he will tell you in an interview too. He'll say, "Now, I'm not going to ask you any questions I don't already know the answer to." Then he asks you lots of questions. It's a little intimidating, a little awe-inspiring there. So that is why I will not be here, but I will tell you this. My heart will be in Cobb, and I will forever be appreciative of the opportunity to work on projects where you know, you can ride through and you see them, you know that somebody is safe today. Somebody's turning movement at a certain intersection is safely made because of things you did, and I will forever be changed by the management team and the Cobb County employees that have been my privilege to work with.
Well, we appreciate you. You, you're absolutely right. When you came here, there was a, there was a box of mixed puzzle pieces. And there were a lot of good things that had to be had, and there was a lot of things that must be done, and you took that challenge to take those boxes of pieces and sort them out and put them together. And what you've done for this county in the last six years has just been incredible. The accomplishments that you've helped contribute and steered to SPOS programs, countless projects that we thought would never occur, you made happen, include one that's going to occur up at Skip's Fans Connector here shortly, two major studies. The list goes on and on, the accomplishments you've done, the leadership you've provided not only for your department, for the entire organization has been next to none, and I know for heart, I know in my heart, you came here with a purpose to make a difference, and you made a difference. I also know where you're going, you're going for the real same reasons. And we appreciate.
I, um...
Appreciate you much.
I'll be citizen Cobb now.
We know where you live.
So when Deborah Dance, when you lean over Deborah Dance and say, "Who signed up for public comment?" And she says, "Faye de Massamito."
That's me, so, no, we appreciate. I'm sorry for getting chucked up, but we appreciate very much what you've done for this county.
Thank you.
And wish you guys the best of, best of everything with where you're heading. Okay? Thank you. That'll take us to Tab Ten. Mr. Cannon?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. This evening, we have four items. The first item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a consolidated contract with Moreland Altobelli Associates Incorporated for program management services consisting of program management assistance, pre-construction services, and complete construction management services for the 2016 Park SPOS Program and the continuation of the 2011 Park SPOS Program. Approve Work Authorization One in an amount not to exceed two million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty dollars and twenty-four cents for the period of January one, 2016 through December thirty-first, 2017. I ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents in substantial similar form to those provided under separate cover as approved by the county attorney's office.
Commissioner Burl?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda, Agenda Item One, the contract with Moreland Altobelli.
Motion is second. Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Item Two, please.
Second item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a final closeout supplemental agreement and deductive change order number one to the contract with Ed Castro Landscape Incorporated, reducing the contract by twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars for revised total contract of amount of one million, three-hundred-and-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nine dollars for the construction services related to the redevelopment of Al Bishop Softball Complex under the 2011 Park SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. Move to approve as presented, the deductive change order.
Second.
Multiple seconds. Call a question. Motion carries five-zero.
Next item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical Service Incorporated in amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars for the installation of new concrete light poles, sports lighting fixtures, and related equipment to serve athletic field lighting at Sweat Mountain Park under the 2011 Park SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl?
Yes, with pleasure, I make a motion to approve and look forward to the additional improvements yet to come.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Item Four, please.
The final item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number one to the contract with Diversified Construction of Georgia Incorporated, increasing the contract by ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-four dollars for revised total contract amount of six-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-four dollars for the construction services related to the construction of two buildings at Terrell Mill Park under the 2011 Park SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Ots?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make motion to approve, and these are some of the final pieces for basically a complete redo of Terrell Mill Park, which looks great.
Yes, second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Tab Eleven, Support Services Agency. John, you have one item?
Good evening, Chairman, County Manager, and Commissioners.
Good morning, John.
This item is, it doesn't sound very good, but it's all right.
Oh, it doesn't. Stay over there, buddy.
This is for the East Marietta Library 2016 SPOS Project. Although what we're asking for tonight is not funded by the SPOS yet. This is funded by the Georgia Board of Regents grant of two million dollars. We advertised for design builders in Marietta Daily Journal. Eight firms responded. The selection committee got together and interviewed some of them, and they recommend that approval of a contract with Batson Cook Company, the top-ranked design build firm, be selected for the project. Now, the county and Batson Cook will finalize the design, and then Batson Cook will determine the guaranteed maximum price. Only the design builder's fee, the general conditions, and the design are included in the contract that you'll be approving tonight, not the actual cost of construction. Once the guaranteed maximum price is determined, a recommendation with the construction cost will be presented to the Board of Commissioners for approval at a later time. We expect that to be sometime in the February, early March timeframe. Upon that approval and funding, the onsite construction will proceed, and that will utilize the 2016 SPOS funds. So the department recommends that the Board approve a design build contract with Batson Cook Company in amount not to exceed one million, three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars to include design costs of five-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-nine, project fee costs of three-hundred-and-thirteen-four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, and general condition costs of five-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars for a combined total of one million, three-hundred-and-forty-three-nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars for the new East Marietta Library 2016 SPOS Project located at twenty-fifty-one Lower Roswell Road, Marietta. Approve the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute necessary documents.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Ots?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the community out there, this has been a long time coming. Ten years ago, they were told that the library was going to be replaced, which is one of the oldest in the county, and it's taken that long with some help from Sharon Cooper and some others in the state legislature to get the money that we're talking about tonight, and it's going to be a tremendous addition and rejuvenation to the area. So motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel better, John? Next tab is Tab Twelve. I've been advised by Director Johnson that he'd like to pull this on for consideration on later dates. We consider that pulled. Tab Thirteen, there is one item, and it's a chair recommendation, and Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to present it to the Board of Commissioners, the request to adopt a resolution authorizing the expansion of the scope and responsibility of the one-percent special-purpose local option sales tax citizen oversight committee to include all 2016 SPOS projects and adopt the gross money changes to its bylaws. As you folks know, this team, a volunteer citizens group, provides invaluable oversight value to our SPOS that provides the transparency and clarity and oversight that the community has asked for us to do so, and in doing so, they do an outstanding job, and we appreciate all the members that have served on that committee. So I bring that forward in a form of a motion. Is there a second? Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Takes us to Tab Fourteen, our second public comment. Counselor? Thank you. Takes us to Tab Fifteen, Appointments. There's one item to be brought forward by the chairman. We, I request that the Board of Commissioners report Nancy Arnold and Donnie Newsom to the Hospital Authority of Cobb County for a six-year term to expire on August seventh, 2020. Is there a second? Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. That takes us to Tab Sixteen. Commissioned comments. Want to begin the evening with Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I would first like to let the community know that we will be consolidating the rest of the, the community zoning meetings to one meeting in December due to the holiday this week, and the holidays at the end of December. So those meetings will be held on Wednesday, December ninth, at six p.m. at the South Cobb Recreation Center, and look forward to seeing all of you there, and thank you for your continued participation as we kicked off this program at the top of this year. Also want to share a very hearty Thanksgiving Day wish towards all the constituents. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to serve for another year, and I look forward to us continuing to work to make the district and the county the best that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. I'd like to begin tonight with a couple of public safety events that occurred over the last couple of weeks. One was in Acworth. PD Officer Sergeant Brian Hunt came upon an accident near North Cobb High School and pulled an unconscious driver out of the accident and realized that he was non-responsive and began life-saving CPR and saved the occupants' life. Follow that was Station Twenty-eight around, and Metro ambulance crew, and here's the group that did that for saving this fourteen-year-old boy that you see pictured there. Wayne Sellers, Jack Robitsky, Tate Young, Jamie Webb, Troy Swan, Sarah Blades from Metro Ambulance, and Paul Duplantis all did what we all come to know and expect is the greatest public safety department in the country, and two examples this week of two events that were handled properly and two lives that were saved. So congratulations to all of those fine public safety officials. Also, Commissioner Burl and I had the opportunity to participate in the first bike-share program at Town Center Mall this week, or last weekend, and Zaxter is the company where you can go in and rent a bike. There's an app for that, and you get, go up and get the first hour free, and eventually the goal is connect all the trails in Cobb County. Smyrna has one as well, and eventually we'll try to be able where you can get on a bicycle anywhere around Town Center Mall and ride throughout the county. So I think it's a great thing, and we're proud to be the first one in the area to do that, so that was a good thing. Commissioner Ots and I are very happy that Movember is drawing to a close because our chins are itching.
Their wives, sir.
Yeah, a lot of people are. And so toward the end of the week, we'll be able to shave again, and we're raising money for cancer awareness for men, so we're proud to participate in that. And finally, Big Shanty Arts Station Gift Box Holiday Market is now open, and you can take advantage of that from November twentieth to December sixteenth. So those are my remarks, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Burl?
Thank you. The timer's going. I'd first like to congratulate our Cobb's Park, Rec., and Cultural Affairs Director, Eddie Cannon, for being named the Cobb Travel and Tourism 2016 Hospitality Hero of the Year. He was honored for his instrumental work in the creation of the Cobb Sports Alliance, and travel and tourism is Cobb's largest industry at two-point-five billion and employs more than thirty thousand people. Congratulations, Eddie. Thank, yeah. Thank you to all those that attended the Cobb 2040 Comprehensive Plan Update at the East Cobb Community Center, Mountain View Community Center, a few weeks ago. There were about forty-five people, and the staff did a great job, and appreciate their input in, in making Cobb a better place to live, work, and play. Also, congratulations to Roseanne Hall, who was named the 2015 East Cobb Citizen of the Year. The Citizen of the Year awards are given to honoring an individual who has made an impact on the community, and those of you that know Roseanne know she has done that and then some, and we thank her for all her contributions and talents to the East Cobb community. And another congratulations to Heath and Lineback Engineers. They were the recipients of the Georgia Partnership for Transportation Quality Preconstruction Design Awards for their work on the first phase of Path 400 Project, and that, that is a five-point-two-mile walkable and bikeable greenway through the heart of Atlanta's north side, connecting neighborhoods, office, and retail locations. Heath and Lineback is located on Canton Road, headquartered on Canton Road in District Three. So we congratulate them, and we're proud to have them in our county. I'd like to wish everybody a very happy, safe, and blessed Thanksgiving, and one thing I, I thought Commissioner Weatherford would mention is, since most of you will be shopping the day after Thanksgiving, KSU is offering Black Friday shoppers free shuttle service to and from Town Center Mall. And you can ride the Big Al Bus.
Bob, Bob.
The Big Al Bus, named after Bob and Bob, from Barrett Pavilion Shopping Center, the outlet shops of Atlanta in Woodstock, and they will run continuously from five a.m. to two p.m. And that's all I have. Happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Ots?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing is, just to remind folks in the East Cobb Terrell Mill area that every Friday on my newsletter, there is an update on the pipeline project to tell folks exactly what's going to be happening the next week, and also daily on Cobb commute, if they're concerned about where the traffic is. Along with the prostate cancer and the mustaches, there still are six days to purchase t-shirts that the Fire Department is selling to raise money for prostate cancer awareness and the Fireman's Fund. If you go to either one of our websites, you can see where to do that. On December eleventh, over at the Jenny T. Anderson Theater, the Symphony on the Square, which is the Marietta Pops Orchestra, will be performing a holiday concert at eight o'clock. If you have never been, it's, it's a great concert. And finally, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And finally, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and remind you to drive safe, slow down, and do not text and drive.
Very well said, and I want to extend my congratulations to Eddie Cannon as well. He is truly a fine representation of Cobb County government and the folks that work here as his leadership and his teamwork with the travel and tourism team, not only for what they try to do in terms of creating opportunities for your sports, sports and all the programming traveling, but the Sports Alliance as well, Eddie. So, thank you so much. We make, you make us so very proud. It's going to be a joint on hall with myself and Commissioner Cupid on December 3rd at Russell Elementary in District Ford. More details will be available forthcoming and shortly, and I too would like to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. We have so very much to be grateful, and thanks for here in the United States of America that a lot of folks around this world, just can't even imagine the freedoms and the blessings we have here. So, as Commissioner Wright said, be safe. As everyone said, be safe, enjoy, and be careful. Mr. County Manager, anything further this evening, sir?
None other than, Chairman, I'd like to wish the Board and our employees, all of Cobb County employees, a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Nothing else, we are adjourned.